Okay, folks, we're gonna get started. We appreciate everybody waiting. Some of you have figured out by now the high school didn't have air conditioning, so that's why we ended up moving over to the middle school because this room was supposed to be a bit cooler. So, thank you for bearing with us. I know we're starting later than we normally would. The appointed hour having arrived, a quorum being present, we do it. Current count have ninety-eight people. Our quorum is fifty. We're going to call the continued annual town meeting to order first. So, we're gonna do them in reverse of the order they originally were. We're gonna do annual first and then special when the annual is over. The time is seven fifty-nine. I'm gonna have the town clerk come forward to read the warning and the return.
Warning for the annual town meeting. Town of Freetown, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Monday, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven thirty P M., upon a regional high school gymnasium, one hundred Howland Road, Lakeville, Mass., zero-two-three-four-seven. Bristol County. To either of the constables of the town of Freetown, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown, who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs, to meet at upon a regional high school, one hundred Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the seventh day of June, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven thirty P M., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonic Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonit, the Freetown Town Hall, the Freetown Communication Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown, this nineteenth day of May, anno domini, two thousand and twenty-one. We are aware that there was an error in printing of the warrant. It had read the second day of June, but it should have read the nineteenth of May. Signed, the Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, George L. Runwald, and Jared C. Zager. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein. In Asonit, the Asonic Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, the Freetown Town Hall. In East Freetown, the East Freetown Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Freetown Communication Center. Signed, Carlton E. Abbott, Junior Constable.
If I'm not mistaken, if we have to do any hand-counted votes, that's what we have. The orange ticket four will be for this meeting. Should match the cover of the warrant. If we have to do any hand-counted votes, you'll just hold this up. That'll be how you're Before we start into the annual town meeting, I was asked, because we didn't have a lot of turnout last year, because of the way we did the meeting, we had it outdoors, and because we've had a lot of turnover and some of the folks that are usually up at the front, just to let you know who some of the people that are up here and have brought tonight's program to you are. The first person I want to actually acknowledge, and this will only take a couple of minutes, so please bear with me. The first person I want to acknowledge was not acknowledged last fall, but retired in December after about twenty years, and that was Jackie Brown, our former town clerk, who is now a voter. Replacing Jackie, under her strong guidance, is Cheryl Estrella, who was our new town clerk. You heard from her a while ago. So Cheryl's right. Mark Rich is our town council. The selectmen are sitting in the front row. Our now senior selectman, having been on the board the longest, is George Runwald. Trevor Matthews joined us last year. Jared Zager joined us this year. Our new town administrator, who joined us in January, is Peter Jankowski, all the way down the end. Hiding off to the side of Peter is Kim Fales, the town accountant. And then we have the finance committee. The chairman, Gary Martin, is seated up here on the stage. Over in the front row, we have Katie Kalina, Mark French, and Ken Wilkins. And not with us tonight from the finance committee are Bob Alderson, Emily Doors, and Christine Dupres. If you don't show up, you don't get applause. I don't know what to say. If you have a cellphone, please make sure that it's on silent or at least vibrate. Just a reminder, if anybody's going to speak during the meeting, the microphone for the general public to speak is on the tier between the two tiers of seats, all the way over to, well, to my right, your left. If you want to speak, just go line up by the microphone and we'll call you in order. If you do come to the microphone, you need to give your name, and you need to at least give your general residence. A lot of people don't want to say their address. You can say Asona Marie Freetown, that's fine. You want to have this orange ticket because only voters are entitled to speak, with the one exception that if we have a discussion about the trash, there will be somebody here from Republic who will be able just to answer some questions. He's not a voter, but people should have information when they're going to vote. For the annual town meeting, all of the articles that we deal with tonight will be funded from taxation unless we specify otherwise. And with that, we're gonna get right into Article One. Article One, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and/or transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Bids: General Government, Public Safety, Health and Human Services, Public Works, Education, Culture and Recreation, Interest and Principal Debt, Townwide Feeling, and Unclassified Serpent Assessment, Retirement, Insurances, Medicare, and Transfers, Capital Equipment, Capital Building, and Other Property Improvements, and/or Take Any Action Relative There Too. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it requires a majority vote. You have a separate budget handed out that you'll want to refer to now as we go through the budget. As we go through the budget, for each department, you will hear what the department has requested and what the finance committee is recommending. If you disagree with the recommendation of the finance committee, or if you have general questions, you want to call out hold. Hold up your vote ticket so I can see who's putting the hold. And at the end of each section, we will adopt the finance committee's recommendations for lines that are not on hold, and then we will go back and do the holds individually. If there are sections where the finance committee recommendation and the request are the same, I'll let you know that. I'll only read the number once. I'll let you know also, there are some instances where the finance committee has changed its recommendation since the budget was printed, so I'll let you know also when that happens. The first budget section that we are going to go through is General Government, and with the exception of one line, which I will point out to you, the request and recommendations are the same, so you'll hear the number only once. One fourteen, the town moderator, personnel, four hundred and fifty dollars; expenses, twenty dollars; total, four hundred and seventy dollars. One twenty-two, the Board of Selectmen, for personnel, twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars; for expenses, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars; for a total of thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. One twenty-five, the town administrator, for personnel, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars; for overtime, five hundred dollars; for expenses, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars; for a total of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. For the finance committee, line one thirty-one, for personnel, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars; for expenses, thirty-six hundred; for a total of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. One thirty-two, the reserve fund, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One thirty-five, the town accountant, for personnel, one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars; for expenses, sixty-one hundred dollars; for a total of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Hold on, accountant. For the town audit, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. For the Board of Assessors, one forty-one, for personnel, seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars; for expenses, two, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars; for a total of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. For the assessors' revaluation, line one forty-two, for expenses, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. One forty-five, the town treasurer, which includes the tax collector, for personnel, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars; for expenses, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents; for a total of two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents. Hold on, the treasurer and collector. For legal fees, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. For management information systems, line one fifty-five, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Line one fifty-eight, for tax title foreclosures, fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. One sixty-one, the town clerk, for personnel, one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents; for expenses, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars; for a total of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. Hold. For primaries and elections, for personnel, six thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents; for expenses, twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars; for total of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. For registration, for personnel, one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars; for expenses, eight thousand dollars; for a total of nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five For the Conservation Commission, for personnel, twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars; for expenses, four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars; for a total of seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Hold on, the Conservation Commission. For the Planning Board, line one seventy-five, for personnel, forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents; for overtime, fifteen hundred and twelve dollars; for expenses, seven thousand, six hundred dollars; for a total of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents. Hold. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, for personnel, nineteen hundred and fifty dollars; expenses, six hundred dollars; for a total of two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. For the Soil Conservation Board, for personnel, seven hundred dollars; for expenses, four hundred dollars; for a total of eleven hundred dollars. For the Economic Development Committee, for personnel, fifteen hundred dollars; for expenses, five hundred dollars; for a total of two thousand dollars. Public Buildings and Property Maintenance, this is one where there has been a change. The finance committee is now recommending the requested amount, so you will hear the line, the numbers only once. For personnel, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars; for overtime, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents; for expenses, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That is also now the recommended number; for a total of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. For property insurance, eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. For the annual town report, which you could have picked up on the way in, and if you haven't, you can pick up on the way out, twenty-five hundred dollars. For the D E P Hazards Materials Assessment, zero dollars. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the finance committee's recommended figures for the lines which are not on hold. Motion is made and seconded to adopt the finance committee's budget for the lines that are not on hold. I'll remind you now, the holds are on the town accountant, the treasurer and tax collector, the town clerk, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and Public Buildings and Property Maintenance. All those in favor of the adoption of the budgets not on hold, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The lines not on hold have been adopted unanimously. We'll now go back to the lines that are on hold, so we're going back to line one thirty-five, which is the town accountant. If somebody has a question or would like to make a change on that line, come on down to the microphone.
Hi. I actually withheld all of those. I just want to say that I have one question for all of them, with the exception of public property stuff. We kind of lumped them all together here.
Okay.
I put a hold on all the ones that have union positions. I think I might have missed one along the way, but it's a general question. To these, the recommended numbers, those include any sort of cost of living increases, because I know that this is a, the next fiscal year will be a new contract here.
Okay. I'm gonna throw that question first to the town administrator.
The Board of Selectmen. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen have not approved them into C D As to be boarded yet. So, they're all, they're all technically still in negotiations.
So, the dollar amounts are not in that dollar amount that was in the recommendations?
That's my impression.
Okay. And, but just for future reference, is the, the voters get a chance to approve those C D As, or are those not going to, to, on the warrant?
I will throw that one to the town attorney.
Mr. Secretary, thank you. Ultimately, once, once the collective bargaining agreements have been authorized and negotiated, they would have to come back to town meeting for appropriation of the first-year cost items, and that would then essentially serve as the approval of town meeting for those, those collective bargaining agreements. So, as mentioned by the town minister already, the numbers you have here don't reflect what would have not been completed yet. Once those collective bargaining agreements are completed, then town meeting would have the ability to appropriate for the first year, which would satisfy the requirement for approval by town meeting.
Okay. Then I withdraw my hold on all those others, except for public properties.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll just ask, that was the town accountant. Also on hold were the treasurer, the town clerk, the Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board. Did anybody else have any questions on any of those budgets? Okay. Seeing none, I would ask now for a motion to adopt the finance committee's recommendation for town accountant, treasurer, town clerk, Conservation Commission, and Planning Board. Somebody can just say so moved.
So moved.
Okay. We had that motion and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those figures are adopted unanimously. The remaining hold is on public buildings and Does anybody want to speak on public buildings and property maintenance?
Thought that wasn't paying attention. So, I know that in previous meetings, there was talks about the, lots of changes of town beach and the vote and whatnot. I just don't know which budget have the dollar amounts. That's gonna be expected for that, if it ends up in public properties or if somebody could replace it.
All right. That one, I'm gonna throw to the finance committee. Or Peters, would you like to take it too?
Yeah. We had talked previously that we would put it into building, public building and property maintenance, but tonight, we changed our minds and put it back into the health department.
Okay. So, that's the reason for the change in recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So, then there'll be a corresponding change in the health budget to reflect that also. Okay. Are there any additional questions on public buildings or property maintenance? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the finance committee's recommended figure. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously. We move on now to public safety, which starts with two-ten, the police department. This will be one again where the finance committee altered their recommendation, so on the personnel line, there was a whole whopping twenty-dollar difference, and everybody now agrees on that twenty dollars. For the police department, for overtime, two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents. For personnel, one hundred, one million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents. Expenses, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents; for a total of two million, three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. For the communication center, for overtime, forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents?
I think the total on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I read the wrong total on the police. The police total should be two million, three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. There's that pesky twenty dollars again. For the communication center, for overtime, forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents. For personnel, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eight cents. For expenses, fifty thousand, thirteen dollars; for a total of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twelve cents. For the fire department, again, there was a change here because there was an agreement reached. So, for overtime, one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. For personnel, one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. For expenses, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one fifty; for a total of one million, four hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars even. For the building department, there was again a small change. For personnel, the requested figure is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. The recommended figure is one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. For expenses, the request and recommendation match at ninety-six hundred dollars; for a total of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. For the gas inspector, six thousand dollars. For the plumbing inspector, six thousand dollars. For the sealer of weights and measures, four thousand dollars. For the electrical inspectors, eighteen thousand dollars. For civil defense, the requested figure was two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The recommended figure is two thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Expenses are seventeen thousand dollars. For a total recommended, a total requested budget of nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and a total recommended budget of nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. For the animal control officer, the requested personnel amount is thirty-six thousand, seven hundred. The recommended figure is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. Expenses match at nine thousand, sixty dollars. For a total request of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, and a total recommendation of forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
I think, I think those were, those were the ones that we changed. We raised the, those to match the...
Yeah. I have the recommendation is thirty-seven, four twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
Is somebody putting a hold on the, on the animal inspector? I'm sorry. Okay. We do have a hold on that. Animal control officers, not the animal inspector anymore. For forestry, which is the tree warden, for personnel, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. For expenses, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. For a total request and recommendation of thirty-three thousand, ninety dollars. And for the harbor master, one hundred dollars. So, I will now ask for a motion to adopt the finance committee's recommendation for the public safety budgets other than the animal control officer, which is on hold. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those lines are adopted unanimously. We will now go back to the animal control officer, who has a hold.
Actually, now that I look at it, I might have misread it. Were the, did the, I'm sorry, the request and the recommendation, do those match for this?
No, the recommendation is higher now. The request is thirty-six, seven hundred. The finance committee is recommending thirty-seven, four twenty-five.
Okay. Can you guys just explain that a little bit?
I'll throw that to the finance committee.
I think that's just the two percent cost of living increase that was agreed upon by the selectmen after the budgets were submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions on that line? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the recommended figures, thirty-seven, four twenty-five, nine thousand, sixty, for a total of forty-six thousand, four eighty-five.
Hold.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is adopted unanimously. For the education budgets, they all match, so this one might go a little bit faster. For the school committee, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. For the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District, Regional Assessment for Education, eleven million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. For the regional, Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District, Assessment for Transportation, two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. For the Freetown-Lakeville District, other charges, zero dollars. For regional debt for the new middle school, the building we're in right now, one hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. For regional debt for the Georgia-Ruston Intermediate School, which is the old middle school, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. For regional debt for pool rehabilitation, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. For regional debt for athletics, the facilities, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. For a total, Freetown-Lakeville Regional Budget of twelve million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty-one dollars. For Bristol County Agricultural High School, one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. For the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School Assessment, one million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. For the Bristol-Plymouth Regional Vocational Technical School Assessment, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. I heard no hold, so I'll ask for a motion to adopt the recommended figures for the education budget. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The education budget are adopted unanimously. For the public works budget, gee, I wonder if there'll be a hold here. For the highway department, for overtime, two thousand dollars. For personnel, four hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. For expenses, ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. For a total request and recommendation of five hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. For snow and ice removal, for overtime, twenty thousand dollars. For expenses, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For a total request and recommendation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For street lamps, request and recommendation, five thousand dollars. For trash collection and disposal, nobody jumped the gun on that one. The request is six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The recommendation is six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Hold.
And he holds. For the transfer station, for personnel, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-four cents. For expenses, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars; for a total of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-four cents. Request and recommendation. For the cemetery commission, for personnel, eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. For expenses, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. For a total request and recommendation of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. I will at this time ask for a motion to adopt the recommended budgets for the lines that are not on hold, which is the lines other than trash collection. Motion made and seconded to adopt the recommended figures other than trash collection and disposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I think I heard one no, so we're gonna call that adopted by the majority. We will now go back to our hold, which is on trash collection and disposal. I'm gonna first offer the microphone to the finance committee, as I believe they, I have something they would like to say about their recommendation.
Okay. So, there were two bids for the trash collection. As much of you know, the bid that was accepted by the Board of Selectmen is, over the course of three years, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars higher than the bid that was the lowest bid, and that's nineteen point two percent higher. In the first year, it's a sixty-seven thousand dollar difference roughly. In the second year, it's roughly seventy-five thousand, and in the third year, it's about ninety-five, ninety thousand, five hundred. So, yeah, the, the selectmen, I'm sure have their reasons for wanting to go with the Borges Company, and the finance committee doesn't really take any position as to which company should get the contract, but we feel that paying an extra nineteen percent is excessive. We lowered the recommendation to twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand and two hundred and seventy-five dollars above Republic's bid, but forty-seven thousand dollars below Borges's bid. And we feel that if Borges can, can come close to matching Republic, we feel that would be the responsible thing for the town to do. In addition, there's some unknowns about the contract with Borges. The cost of recycling is up in the air. We think that would be, probably be a bit higher, but the, one of the key things is that with Borges's contract, there's a fuel adjustment charge, which, for example, if diesel fuel hits about four dollars a gallon, it's currently about three, three eighteen. If it hits four dollars a gallon, it will cost the town roughly an extra ten thousand dollars a year. And the way diesel fuel is going, and the way all petroleum prices are going, we feel that, that that's a big unknown, which is likely to make Borges's bid even less competitive. I believe the bid from Republic does not include a fuel surcharge, so there's a bigger difference than it appears. I think that's about, about what I have to say.
Okay. The selectmen are the board of health, so either the selectman is the board of health or the town administrator, if anybody would like to respond to that from your position, and then we can go off to everybody else. The selectmen are drawing straws to see if there's a straw...
The new guy gets it.
New guy gets the short straw.
All right. So our reason wasn't necessarily a hundred percent driven by nature. Has anyone who lives in town been tested? You've had a lot of problems with the current trash collection. And we really decided to turn the triangle. I can't say we... I can say that, me personally. Sometimes getting the less amount doesn't necessarily mean the best product, right? So we went with the company who we had before, who we had zero issues with. Went above and beyond, and sometimes you gotta pay a little bit more to get a little bit more. So I'm completely okay with that, and I a hundred percent support Borges and want them to act on board.
Trevor? George, I know you were a dissenting vote. Would you like to give your position?
Absolutely. I would like to differ on the quality of the service. In the years that precede us here, I have not really seen any issues. In the last year, there may have been some issues because of COVID and staffing. There were some complaints from some people. Chris, are you here? Would you come down and...
I would like to sit.
Hold on one moment. Sir, are you a voter in town? Okay, you do need to be in the second row then. You can't be sitting with the voters. Second row down here. So George, as a non-voter, he can answer specific questions or if there's a specific topic you'd like him to address.
I would like Chris to address the complaints. Chris?
You can come ahead for this microphone.
To explain the numbers and the reason for some of the complaints that we've had, and what action we've taken.
You just need to give your full names of the town, or I can record you.
Sure, thank you. Chris Mussera, Republic Services, business address is Tannity Airport Road, Fort Worth, Massachusetts. So first off, Republic Services is a partner in town for approaching almost five years, and it's something we're very proud of. We have a lot of employees that live in town as well and work in the community as well. As far as the complaints, a couple of things. I think one of the big things we need to really consider as we go back and we look over, say, 2020, it was a COVID world pandemic.
I'd just like to step a little bit closer.
It was a world pandemic that certainly had an impact, not only on our industry and our company, but certainly, I think, every company out there. We certainly don't want that to define us, but we did a pretty good job considering the challenges in the industry and in the world. What I did, one of the things I did was I really wanted to kind of validate what that... What were the calls? So I actually have the call on from the Department of Health, from the Board of Health. And I added a lot of calls that came in in 2020. It was a hundred and thirty-five calls. I think the thing, we have to put that in perspective, is we have roughly six thousand collection points a week for trash and recycle in the town. And when you start to think about only getting a hundred, a couple hundred calls in the course of a year, that's still pretty good. We know we weren't perfect, but as we look today, as we've kind of come on with COVID era, thank God, we're averaging only a couple of calls a week. That's kind of, things have improved and things have gotten better. So again, we certainly don't want COVID to define us with that.
Brian, you and Tim have been very patient, but I just want to ask, Mr. Borges is here also. If you'd like to say anything at this time of the vote, I think that would be fair. If not, I'll pass it off to the people in line. Right over there. Brian, you will be next. I promise.
I'll make it short. I still serve as the town attorney through the whole pandemic. Never missed a day. No interruptions at all. From the sixties until I lost the job, never missed a day. Never left trash on the street, not once. Pandemic, we kept working. Got it done a hundred percent every single day.
All right. Now, Brian, Lord, Six Flags, Long Grove.
No, no, we all know each other, we all know each other.
So my problem with the Republic representative that is here today, when he says that many people that live in town, they didn't send anybody that lived in town to talk at this meeting, though. The thing is, is that you said you don't want COVID to define yourself, but then you made excuses for every issue because of COVID. So you used your exact reason to define... Do the math for that. My understanding is that when I got here in 2015, we had Borges. I had no issues with them. I then had no issues with Republic either, but I would much rather have a local place taking care of it that I know has handled it before. That many people in town that I know, that have lived here for a long time, have said that they really trust Borges. I do find that it is a little bit interesting. I found out today that when Republic outbid or underbid the job in 2016, there was then a discrepancy of about four hundred thousand dollars. And that figure over the course of these years. Now, could he... Does anybody have any... That's some information that I heard. This is the only place, apparently, that we can ever get information sorted out. So does anybody have an answer to that four hundred thousand dollar discrepancy that happened from when they put in their contract bid in 2016 and undercut Borges, and then asked us for four hundred thousand dollars more? Now, I understand there's a fuel issue there. Is that what the issue was, or was it something else? Or did it not happen at all?
I'm not sure that any of the current town officers were here when that happened. So gentleman, Chris from... Mr. Mussera from Republic, if you have an answer to that.
Hi, so I really don't know what that, what he's referring to. So the way the bid process worked a couple of years, it's almost five years ago. We submitted a bid over the term of three years, and then it was two one-year extensions. The cost that we built the town was exactly what we bid on it. So I'm not sure what he's really referring to in terms of a four hundred thousand. The only difference that it could be was the recycling market changed. The town at one point had a direct contract with a company called CMAS, not CMAS, with Week Year, where the town's contract with Week Year, where the hauler just dropped the material. Week Year, Week Year built the town. Week Year went out of business. Subsequently, what happened was what we... Markets, commodity markets, recycling markets collapsed. Most of the unvolunteered in this country was going to China, and China closed. So the commodity markets went crazy, so the cost for recycling went higher in terms of the commodity. But that's not anything to do with our bid at all. So we built the town what was according to what we issued five years ago.
So how was recycling out? So you're saying the recycling is separate from the trash, in this pricing?
No, the collection is not. The collection of the curd.
When you forecast the price, don't you look at commodity pricing? And what could happen with forecasting of it?
We do. And the way it works is whether it's us or Borges or anybody, is whatever the commodity cost is in that month, it's a commodity move.
Right.
That charge is just simply passed over to the town.
Right. So you're saying that the bid that you put in was for how much this year?
This year?
For this term? That was... Because we're looking at six hundred and sixty thousand for Borges, but what was your...
The three-year price was a million two ten, it costs. That's three years.
Okay. So now, you're saying that you wouldn't come back again and reduce the price or raise the price or anything, the commodity market changes because of...
No.
China, the relations with them is different. So they used to take our recycling, but now they're not taking the recycling. We have this recycling piling up in facilities, places all around the country. Now, my initial argument was that cooperation to handle that, but I've been reassured by Borges tonight that he has handled it and will continue to handle it in the proper way. So it leaves me to wonder...
Hold on, you're asking like three or four questions. Let him jump in and answer.
So let me answer the first question. So the million two, the one point two one million for three years, that's a fixed price, doesn't change. The commodity cost per ton, depending on what the market is, will change based on the market. And the way we bid it and so did Borges is the same way. Whatever they get charged, they take it to a third party, to a recycling facility. Whatever the market is in that given month, that cost per ton will be passed on to the town. Matter of fact, when we look at the RFP, ours is actually less than Borges on the cost per ton. They originally bid, we bid, our base rate at the time of the bid was eighty dollars a ton. It was eighty, and Borges, I believe, was ninety. It was higher than us. So his market rate is actually even higher. None of us control that market. It's a commodity market. So that number, based on the amount of tons that are collected each month, is based on the cost per ton, based on the market, would fluctuate. That has for years. This isn't anything new now to talk about.
So the six hundred and sixty thousand would go up as well, just as the million would go up? Is that what you're saying?
The million two one for collection does not change. That's the cost to do the collection of the curb, run the truck, get the people, fuel the car. The recycling volume that we collect, that's in your bids, that's single stream recycling volume. Matter of fact, I'd like to say it's come down, so when you look at that...
Did you realize that I'm speaking in terms of them both together, recycling and trash?
You gotta let him finish first.
Okay, I'll talk about trash in a second. So the recycling cost, when we bid it, it was eighty a ton. Today, we're actually in the forties. So if you look at the bill today that we send the town, not July one, when the starts, we're actually in the forties. So we're already significantly less than what we bid it, and that's because the markets come down, which is a good thing. As far as disposal, the trash itself, the town has a direct contract with Credible Health. That's built directly to the town. We don't do anything with that.
What I'm gonna do right now... Brian, if you have more questions, just cycle back to the back of the lineup. I'll let the next few people jump in. Tim, just remind everybody who you are. Go ahead.
I think I touched on it. I actually have more of a general question about town government, more so than Republic or the board. Whose role is it to negotiate contracts? Because the way I've seen what the finance committee, or what you said, Mr. Marty, was kind of, you're negotiating the contract on behalf of the town. And it's my understanding that the bylaws give power to selectmen to do that. I just didn't know if that's changed or...
I'll have the town administrator answer that. And he'll defer to town council.
Thank you, Mr. Marty. Through you. I think as we know, the finance committee makes recommendations on the funding, but the contracting authority goes through the board, the board selection. Okay. I just want to make sure. Thanks.
All right. Great.
Corrector, roll those little fish eyes. So I'm just gonna piggyback off what Jared said as far as the cheapest is not always the best. I know there are many people here who are probably not on social media. And so the complaints that we see as far as Republic goes is really incredible. I mean, you may not know them through the Board of Health, but you know, they are out there. I personally don't even have my trash picked up because of it. When I ended with Borges, I said to forget it because I had problems initially. But that's just me personally. The amount of money is... The difference in money between Borges and them is really gonna be pennies on a dollar when you break it all down over, I mean, a matter of fifty cents a week for a household. And actually, I don't want to quote my exact figure, but the way I figure it comes out to about thirty-two cents a week to these people, okay? The town of Dyne has been using them for over forty years, so you must be doing something right, okay? For those of you who know, myself and a bunch of volunteers, we started a Freetown Food pantry back in December, long before even this was an issue. And as most of you may know, we evolved into the police station now. And from the time we started that, the amount of trash that was generated from the stuff that St. Chuck gave us and cardboard, right up until today, Mr. Borges has donated everything. He's in excess, in excess of twenty-some dumpsters. I can call him up, and manual, they'll have the new dumpsters there, all the trash, the boxes, and recycling, everything for us comes and takes it immediately, okay? So, and all the people in town, you know, if you still stay with Republic or you're going Peter Borges on a Friday, when maybe your trash is picked up or you have a problem with your trash, are you gonna call Don Slager at Republic? Or are you gonna call Peter Borges at his house and come right down here and pick it up? That's where this weight hole right there, to me. So I'll yield the floor.
This... I know the light's probably necessary, but this half of the stage at least is getting kind of blinding. Oh, okay, both halves of the stage are. Uh, here's question. Nope, I think there's two more, and then you can come back.
David presenting his testimony. Everybody, wait. I know we have a lot of talk in here. As I am aware, the contract had been agreed upon. Am I correct? Did you guys accept the Borges bid?
I'm gonna throw that to town council, because he actually mentioned something to me about the contract this second. But I think it'll be...
Thank you, Mr. Marty. I just want to make the point. Town meeting votes on the funding for this line item, but the decision on the contract, both who gets the contract, the terms of the contract, that's exclusively with the board of selectmen. So town meeting doesn't actually get to weigh in on...
My question again was, did you guys accept Borges' bid?
Just let him finish first.
Sir, thank you. So again, ultimately, the purpose of this line is to determine the funding, not who gets the contract. The contract decision remains with the board of selectmen.
All right. Now, to answer your question specifically, the town administrator, please. His specific question was, has the contract already been awarded?
They have agreed to a contract. Both parties have been signed it, please be careful. It's our obligation.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
I'm sorry. The board has negotiated a contract. We've come to terms and conditions. Has now been signed by both parties, just because my square on funding, we're counting.
All right. So again, you guys, in essence, principle, agreed to a contract with Borges. Now, you guys are gonna take and are attempting to take close to seventy thousand dollars off of the budget with a small company that's a town company. And you guys, they've already absorbed the amount of cost to be prepared for the contract. And now you guys, in coercion, are changing the contract. They've already invested time. They've already invested material, and now you guys are pulling part of the contract. It's just for the town, for us to have a reputation dealing with people outside of town, this is a slippery slope. Because if you want companies like Republic to come in, offer a product, I doubt highly that if this was on them, that they would... They'd be very accepting of a contract reduction. That's all I have to say about it. I mean, we're a town company. You know, we're for town companies here in town, we're a small town. To do this to a local company is just, it's unethical. My...
I'm just gonna... Just as a point clarification, I want to make sure folks understand the difference here. The selectmen have proposed and recommended a number that would fund fully the Borges contract. The finance committee has recommended a number that is lesser, that would either fully fund the Republic contract or partially fund the Borges contract. I just want to make sure folks keep that part of it clear, that the two boards are not in agreement on what the dollar amount is. Can you go ahead?
Hi, Dan Wenzendy, East Freetown, Massachusetts. Fifty-five year resident. Just a few words before everybody makes their decision. Republic, yeah, they're a reputable Fortune 500 company in forty-one states with thousands upon thousands of contracts. Where do you think Freetown falls in their priority list? Moving on. Let me tell you about Borges Brothers, an established company in the town. A contributor to the town. A family that's been in this town for over a century. Peter Borges and his father had this contract for fifty-six years, except for the one year it was awarded to BFI. Why was it only awarded to BFI for one year? Because we made these... Because we've made these mistakes before, and that's how we got it back to Peter Borges. So, five years ago, we awarded it to Republic. Somehow, they got a five-year contract, but nobody else has ordered that. Um, we're just voting on three years now. But let me tell you a little bit about Borges Brothers. Whenever you need him, he's there. He does things for this town without you asking. If you call him and you're having an event, you ask him for a dumpster, he doesn't say, "Well, it's gonna cost you an additional two hundred and fifty dollars." He says, "When you need it, where?" Because he cares about the town. Many people in this room worked for his family growing up in this town. We are a community. We are not a com- uh, commodity for some Fortune five hundred company. So, why are we awarding this to somebody in town? Peter lives in town, his co- his company is in town. Collectively, he probably pays twenty-five to thirty thousand a year in property and excise tax, so that's gonna come back to take off whatever the additional is he's charging us a year. And he's always there, we called him. Um, Spencer Lane out in Rochester, they didn't get trash picked up for over a week during the Memorial Day weekend. It was a raccoon fest. If Peter had been called, he would have been there the next day. I can guarantee you that. I know I have fifty-five years' experience with him. Um, a few other things you need to keep into consideration is, it came up from the Finance Committee that part of the contract they're insured about is recycling costs. Well, we came here and we awarded Republic in a special town meeting forty thousand dollars, as Chris just pointed out, for additional recycling costs. So, obviously, they don't know what their recycling costs are gonna be either. Peter Borges is a town member, we're a community. Keep business in town, don't sell Free Town to a Fortune five hundred company. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, folks, uh, Lee's gonna speak, then Brian has, uh, something else to say perhaps, and then at that point, we'll probably move on to a vote, uh, since there's nobody else in line. So, Lee, go ahead, sir.
Lee Von Gar, eighty-seven dot really wrote Free Town Max. I think myself and Mr. Sane on the Board of Selectmen, when we put the trash out to bid the first time, we did it for one reason. We threw the taxpayers running around like manhole covers. We watched every dime, we wanted to make sure we got a good bank for our pocket. That's the job of a selectman and a free, and a Finance Committee person. Not to say how much money they can spend, not to call a few cents for a little bit more. The bottom line is, if this was a blind bid, and one was two hundred and thirty-two thousand more than the other one, they would have laughed at the second bid, wouldn't even consider it. The job here is to measure the depth of your pockets. You wanna throw money around, throw money around. But the bottom line is, when you get your taxpayer, you're gonna look at and say, "Why did this go up?" That's all I have to say.
Brian will have the last few words, and then we'll move on to the vote.
All right. Um, I really think that we should end up sticking with these guys, Borges at the end. Uh, Republic will be there down the road if we need them, but let's give them another chance, I say. They did good for us for so long, give them another shot, and if they screw it up, which they won't, right? And then, then you go back to Republic. Because you guys will come back no matter what, you know that too. So, I say we, uh, move to the previous question and, uh, and debate and start a vote on this. Borges' contract that they deserve.
I, I get, Brian, I get your sentiment, but you can't move the question when you're the last speaker. That's a, that's just a procedural parliamentary thing. But that's okay. Uh, Mr. Maser wanted to make one response, and then I am gonna cut off the debate anyway with the moderator's prerogative, which I get to do, and then we'll move on from there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. You know, it, I actually enjoy listening to everybody's comments, certainly puts things in perspective, but, you know, one of the, I think one of the things that I've, you know, thought about listening to everybody is, I've heard it a couple of times, is, uh, you know, local company, and how for a large, watching by different company, and... Yeah, that, that is true. Uh, there's, there's no doubt. We are in forty-one states, we have thirty-six thousand employees, uh, we have all sorts of collection companies, and landfills, and parks. Yeah, you're right, we are a local company. But one of the things we pride ourselves on in this is, we're also very local. We may carry this large Republic flag, but end of the day, our operation, which is only ten minutes from here, is made up of local people, local employees, local staff, uh, people that work, uh, and live in this community itself. So, sometimes I think, you know, we ask to probably look beyond that large flag, there's a lot of good things that come with that too. Uh, we have a lot of resources because of that large flag, uh, that enables us to do a lot of good and positive things with the community we serve. So, you just keep in mind, we are very local. Um, and then, you also remember, it was a, it was a fair, big process. It was a, everybody was afforded the right to put their best foot forward, to give their best number, uh, entertain an open bid, uh, procedure, and that's exactly what was done. Uh, we are correct, roughly, it's two hundred and thirty-two thousand on the base, it's likely roughly two hundred and fifty thousand, and you factor in the other things the Finance Committee said, and it's a lot of money. I, I've been doing this job for a long time, and I, this is a very unique situation. I, I don't think I've been presented a situation where we've been roughly twenty percent low on a bid, uh, and the next bidder is, is not offering any additional service, it's still weekly current collection trash, recycling, yet willing to pay a quarter of a million dollars more. So, it's a very open, transparent bid process, so, you know what, I would probably ask everybody to really think about that. The last gentleman's comments were right on, it's, uh, it's ultimately, I think, gonna affect, certainly, the tax base, so, thank you.
Uh, we will need a motion on one number or another in order to take a vote.
One of the selectmen's recommendation, buddy.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to take the selectmen's recommended number, which is six hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Do it one more time. It's loud versus soft. We're gonna do it one more time with the sample. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
In my judgment, the ayes are the prevailing sign for a majority vote. Does anybody question whether the ayes are the prevailing sign? Okay, I have one in the bag, uh, so we will do a hand count on this. You again wanna have your orange tickets? The orange tickets will be your vote. Uh, do we have, have we sworn in the counters?
Yes.
Okay. Two or three?
Two.
Two. Okay. So, all those who are in favor of the six sixty-nine one twenty-five, hold your ticket, please. This is in favor of the six sixty-nine one twenty-five. This is in favor of the selectmen's number. I've counted, I've counted all of you up there.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty, okay. Okay, now, all those who are opposed to this number, and this is not necessarily voting for a different number, this is just in opposition to that number, six sixty-nine one twenty-five, please raise your tickets.
You got one up there.
Thank you.
Seven.
Seven. Okay, in favor was fifty-six, opposed was eighteen, so the number six sixty-nine one twenty-five is the number that is adopted. We will move on now to the, um, health and human services budgets, which start with five-ten, the health inspection. Okay, there were some changes in the recommendations here as well. So, for five-ten health inspection services for personnel, the requested figure is one hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. The recommended number is one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. For expenses, the requested number is thirty thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars. The recommended number is twenty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars. The total request is one hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred four dollars and sixty-five cents. And if my math is correct, the total recommendation is one hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. I'll read those again because they're different. The, uh, recommended figures are one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents per personnel, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars for, uh, expenses, and the total is the total of those two, which I scratched out as one forty-four, two forty-nine, sixty-five. Hold on, health. For the council on aging, again...
Can you repeat those?
Yes. Uh, this is just repeating the Board of Health. For personnel, the recommended figure is one seventeen, two fifty-four, sixty-five. For expenses, twenty-six, nine forty-five. Total, one forty-four, two forty-nine, sixty-five. For the council on aging, the request is one hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. The recommendation is one hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and twenty cents. That again is a line that changed. The recommendation is one forty-six, three seventeen, twenty. Expenses remain the same at seventeen thousand, three eighty-eight. For a total for the council on aging of one sixty-three, seven oh five, twenty. One hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred five dollars and twenty cents. For veterans' services, the requested figure is twelve thousand dollars. The recommended figure is twelve thousand, two hundred forty dollars. For expenses, they match at one hundred fifty thousand dollars. For a total request of one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, and a total recommendation of one hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred forty dollars. For Memorial and Veterans' Day, the request and recommendation are both twenty-two hundred dollars. I will ask for a motion to accept the Finance Committee's recommendations for all of the lines except for the Board of Health, the health inspection services. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those lines are adopted unanimously. We now have a hold on the Board of Health.
Uh, so I held it initially for one reason, but I have another one to give some of those new recommendations. First of all, where did those numbers come from? Because I seem to not match anything on, on the sheet here in front of us.
I can tell you the fifteen thousand is that same questionable fifteen thousand from before that came out of Howling Bag.
And I have a question about that too, but...
All right. I will throw these to the Finance Committee, because they've got the wonky numbers.
Okay, so, there was a four thousand dollar request, uh, that the Board of Selectmen recommended, uh, for a new filing system, but apparently that is being paid for out of grant money, so they no longer need that money in the budget. So, the Finance Committee recommends removing that. Um, uh, let's see. I, is there, uh, yeah, fifteen thousand, we've mentioned already, that's, uh, being moved from, uh, uh, building and properties to health inspection. Um, is there a further discrepancy, or...
Tim, I have one follow-up question.
Okay. If, if there is a, a further discrepancy, it might be at, uh, one of those two percent calls, or is that not...
Well, Gary, I just wanna make sure that you cut out four thousand and change for the filing system, but you cut the money out of the personnel line. Was it supposed to come out of the expense line?
Expense, yeah.
All right, I have the personnel line is lowered by forty-four hundred in the expense line statement.
Oh, oh, right, okay.
Kim, Kim has something to add.
The, the number that was read for expenses is four thousand dollars less than recommended, so that number is correct. I think, I'm personally having an issue with this with salaries. It doesn't look like you approved a whole one.
Oh.
Or, uh, based on, if we're actually working with the one seventeen, two five four, six five, that does not have the pull-up, that would be one thousand, three twenty-six, thirty-four added in for the health agent.
All right, because Kim doesn't have a microphone. Is everybody able to hear what Kim had said?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Michael, just for point of reference, right now, we have an interim health agent, so we include a twenty percent for that position, and the other position that office is under the unit.
Whatever. What, just what's the number we're going with? One seventeen, because...
One seventeen, two fifty-four, sixty-five is their current recommendation number.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Tim, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep, and I just had, thank you for the fact clarification, however lightning that was. Um, my other question is, can we just talk about why the beach and foam ramp are under the Board of Health and it's not like a facility? Because that, that is not, so is that fifteen thousand? I just don't understand that at all.
All right, I'll let the town administrator answer that.
Previously, we haven't had any money for beaches for a while. Uh, previously, the money was under the Board of Health years ago. Uh, I thought it best to put it back in there, because that's where originally it was years ago, and it just made sense to be there. We have two folds in the office that oversee, have overseen beaches, but we didn't have that building, so it just made sense operationally to put the fifteen thousand dollars in there with folks who have overseen beaches, testing, all that sort of stuff, rather than the equipment inspector this time.
Okay.
Paul Kudo, this is your time. I apologize for sounding confused, I apologize for sounding confused, but I'm looking at three different numbers. The two, twenty, twenty-two requested budget from the department is one number. The Board of Selectmen requested, uh, all their recommendations is the second number, and then the Finance Committee is the third number. And I, I'm not sure, has, has something changed, or, I'm like, for, you have expenditures recommended by the Board of Selectmen at thirty thousand, and the Finance Committee's went from eleven, nine forty-five, uh, the thousand, nine forty-five, and I didn't hear anything, so I'm, I'm totally lost when these numbers are coming from.
Sure. Uh, before we answer, I'm just gonna repeat the numbers again. The requested figure, what the department requested, one twenty-nine, five fifty-nine, sixty-five for personnel, thirty thousand, nine forty-five for expenses, for a total request of one fifty-two, five oh four, sixty-five. What the Finance Committee is now recommending, they amended their recommendation at their meeting earlier this evening, for personnel, one seventeen, two fifty-four, sixty-five. For expenses, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars. For a total of one hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and...
One forty-four, one ninety-nine, sixty-five.
Thank you, I knew my math was off. One forty-four, one ninety-nine, sixty-five is the total recommendation.
Motion to accept Finance Committee's number. Should I give the...
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the Finance Committee's recommended numbers. Mr. Kudo, did that answer your question, or do you still have a question?
I was just curious as to why, I guess, Board of Selectmen is different. Obviously, they've got a discrepancy. I just, like I said, I have so many numbers, none of them were matched, just stretching here.
Right. Peter, go ahead.
I do think it's the two parts. The fifteen thousand we moved from building over to the Board of Health. And then there was a, we actually found a, we have a grant we share with Plato, and we can't, I believe the number is four-thousand-three-hundred and something, I figured the exact number, and rather than take out the tax base, we're taking out of the grant. So they both affect that line.
Some of them were just way off, and I just lost track of where we're going.
I have to admit to, I just noticed at one point that I read the Council on Aging line instead of the Health line. Far back in the conversation, so that probably didn't help. So our motion before us again is to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendation, which is one-hundred-seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents per personnel, twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-five dollars for expenses, for a total budget of one-hundred-forty-four-thousand-one-hundred-ninety... ninety-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. All in favor? All opposed? Adopted unanimously. We will move on to the Culture budgets now. For the, again, when we start off with this, we're going to have one that's got a slight change in the recommendation. So for six-eleven, the libraries for personnel, the requested figure is one-hundred-twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-eight dollars and two cents. The recommended figure is now one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. For overtime, the numbers match at zero dollars. For expenses, the numbers match at forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. The total request is one-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. The total recommendation is one-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Hold. For the Cultural Council, the request and recommendation match at one-thousand-five-hundred dollars. For the Historical Commission, the request and recommendation match at five-hundred dollars. For the Parade and Fireworks Committee, the request and recommendation match at zero dollars. And as a programming note for those who are not aware, this year's Fourth of July was canceled again. They are hoping to bring it back next year. I will ask now for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendation on the budgets that are not on hold. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Those lines are adopted unanimously. We will now return to the Library budget, which is on hold.
So, man, can you just explain why the discrepancy between the request and the recommendation?
Uh, Finance Committee.
Yeah, it's one of these two percent cost of living adjustments.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further questions? All right, I ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended number on this item. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? The recommended figures are adopted unanimously. We are on the home stretch of the budget. Debt service. There are no more discrepancies for the rest of the budget, so you'll only hear numbers once. Seven-ten, the retirement of debt for the Free Ten Elementary School principal excluded, five-hundred-ninety-thousand dollars. For the new police station principal excluded, five-hundred-thousand dollars. For the floods of twenty-ten, for principal non-excluded, seventy-thousand dollars. For a total of one-million-one-hundred-sixty-thousand dollars. Seven-fifty-one, interest on long-term debt. For the Free Ten Elementary School, interest excluded, thirty-thousand-one-hundred dollars. For the new police station, interest excluded, ninety-thousand dollars. For the floods of twenty-ten, interest non-excluded, two-thousand-one-hundred dollars. For a total of one-hundred-twenty-two-thousand dollars. Interest on short-term debt, zero dollars. And I have a motion to adopt the recommended figures for debt service. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Those items are adopted unanimously. And for the unclassified, for the SERPET assessment, one-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. For retirement and pension contributions, one-million-three-hundred-thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-five dollars. For Warpman's Comp, eighty-three-thousand-six-hundred-thirty dollars. For unemployment benefits, twenty-thousand dollars. For health insurance, one-million-seven-hundred-seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. For life insurance, twenty-two-hundred dollars. For Medicare, seventy-thousand dollars. For liability insurance, fifty-four-thousand-six-hundred-thirty dollars. For townwide fueling, one-hundred-eight-thousand dollars. And for transfer to trust, other post-employment benefits liability, two-hundred-thousand dollars. I have a motion to adopt the recommended figures for unclassified. Motion is made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Those items are adopted unanimously. We are now on the capital budget, which is the end of the budget. Again, the requested and recommended figures match, so you'll hear them once. For lease of existing police cruisers, this is under capital equipment, fifty-three-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. For the lease of new police cruisers, thirty-six-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents. For the purchase of police equipment, zero. For the lease of existing fire and EMS apparatus, two-hundred-thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-two dollars and four cents. For the lease of new fire and EMS apparatus, two-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty dollars. For the purchase of fire and EMS equipment, zero dollars. For leases on existing highway vehicles and equipment, forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. For leases on new highway vehicles and equipment, zero. For purchase of highway equipment, zero. For purchase of cemetery equipment, zero. For the purchase of all other equipment, fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-ninety dollars. For a total capital equipment of six-hundred-sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. For capital building improvements, for town buildings and other property improvements, seventy-thousand dollars. For fire station improvements, twenty-thousand dollars. There being no holds on any of those lines, I will ask for a motion to adopt the recommended figures for the capital budget. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? The capital budget is adopted unanimously. We have now finished Article One. Article Two, back to the orange warning. On Article Two, the salaries have all been recommended at the requested amounts, just like the budget. If you have a question about one of them, shall hold. If not, we will go right along. Article Two. To see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Chapter Forty-One, Section One Hundred Eight of the General Laws as amended for the fiscal year 2022, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The moderator, one-hundred-fifty dollars per meeting. The Board of Selectmen, six-thousand dollars per member per year. The Town Clerk, sixty-five-thousand dollars per year. The Board of Assessors, five-thousand dollars per member per year. The Tree Warden, twenty-two dollars per hour. The Highway Surveyor, seventy-two-thousand-six-hundred-eight-eight dollars per year. The Regional School Committee, one-thousand-one-hundred-six dollars per member per year. The Water and Sewer Commission, two-hundred-fifty dollars per member per year. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the budget as, the article as recommended, excuse me. Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Two as recommended. There were no holds, so I assume there's no conversation. Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Two is adopted. Article Three. To see if the town will vote to approve the sum of one-million-three-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents to operate the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2022, with an appropriation for the following direct expenses: Personnel, ninety-three-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-five dollars and eighty-one cents; expenses, one-million-one-hundred-forty-one-thousand-five-hundred-fifty dollars; for a total of one-million-two-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the sum of ninety-three-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-eight dollars for indirect costs appropriated in the general fund as part of the omnibus budget, with all costs totaling one-million-three-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents, and supported with ninety-thousand dollars from certified retained earnings, and with one-million-two-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents from Water Sewer Enterprise receipts, or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Three as read. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Four, to see if the town will vote in accordance with, I'm sorry, Article Three was adopted unanimously. Almost forgot that part. To see if the town, Article Four, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter One-Fifteen, Section Nine, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of five-hundred dollars for the maintenance of veterans' graves, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Four as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Four is adopted unanimously. Article Five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of two-thousand dollars to pay for the public purpose of supporting the sexual assault and domestic violence program at the New Bedford Women's Center Incorporated, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. So moved. Motion is made and seconded, I'll clarify, that's to adopt the article. All in, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Five is adopted unanimously. As a programming note, Articles Six and Seven will be funded through the Capital Stabilization Fund, which I believe is what the Finance Committee is recommending. Is that capital stabilization for the sidewalk and the bucket truck?
Yeah, that's what Kim was recommending.
Yes, okay. So those two articles will require a two-thirds vote, not a majority vote. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of two-hundred-fifty-five-thousand dollars to reconstruct the sidewalk on the west side of South Main Street, from High Street to Water Street, including engineering and site preparation costs, and any other incidental and related costs, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Highway Surveyor. It now requires a two-thirds vote because it is coming from the Capital Stabilization Fund. The Finance Committee recommends this article and that it come from the Capital Stabilization Fund. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Six and to fund it through the Capital Stabilization Fund. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Six is adopted unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of thirty-thousand dollars to purchase and equip a new or used bucket truck for use by the Highway Department and other departments, including any incidental or related costs, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by petition. It now requires a two-thirds vote as it would be funded through the Capital Stabilization Fund. The Finance Committee does not recommend this article. All right, motion was made and seconded to table. I'm going to ask Paul if you'll consent to, shake that to a motion to defeat. Table usually is not in order. Motion to defeat, Bob, your second still stands? Okay, motion has been made and seconded to defeat the article. Is there any discussion on the article? Chuck, go ahead.
Fourteen Mason Road. This article was submitted by some employees to purchase a bucket truck for thirty-thousand dollars. If anybody used pickup truck for thirty-thousand dollars, I wouldn't find it very advisable to put any employee sixty feet in the air in said bucket truck. If bucket truck was, one, be purchased by the town, I think between myself and the tree ward, we would submit a proper article for such a vehicle. So I don't think it's advisable to spend thirty-thousand dollars on a vehicle like this. Between certifying people and certifying said bucket truck annually, I think you're opening up a can of worms by spending thirty-thousand dollars on said truck. That's it.
To Maggottash, it's on it. Can the Board of Selectmen just explain why they are recommending this article? Trevor, I think that's choice pick for you this time.
Honestly, I don't think we ought to recommend, or I was personally, I'm looking at how I am turning.
Oh, Trevor, just face ready to the microphone.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't have the information of how they see the dots in here, so I didn't know Chuck posed it. I don't remember actually recommending it.
So since there's a discrepancy, I am just going to hold the Selectmen individually. They're not meeting, but I, the town meeting can do that if they support the bucket truck or not. Jerry?
No.
No, Trevor?
No.
No, George? No, the Board of Selectmen does not support this article either. The Finance Committee, I assume, still does not support the article. Correct. So the motion and second before us are to defeat the article. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? The article is defeated unanimously. Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of three-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the sale of cemetery lots account to be used by the Cemetery Commission for maintenance and improvements at the Ascendant Burying Ground, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to accept the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Eight is adopted unanimously. Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to install one streetlight on pole number VZ six-nine or seven-seven over six-nine near the Guilford-Age Hathaway Library on North Main Street, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by petition. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Nine. Is there any discussion? Is there any cost associated with this? Finance Committee or Kim? Or, or Peter? Peter, it looked like he might have wanted to answer.
I would assume there's a cost. I do not know what the cost would be for corporate streetlights at that time. There would be a cost.
Finance Committee or Kim, would you guys like to weigh in on that part at all?
Yeah, we're not aware of the cost, and it doesn't affect the budget, so we did not make a recommendation on it.
Kim, is there any way to pay for this if there is a cost? You, you have your own microphone now, don't you?
I do, but I don't know what to do with it.
There is no microphone training budget tonight.
Sounds like a slide. Yep, you're good.
So my guess is there would be the cost of a streetlight, and I believe from the upgrade that we've already done for the streetlights or switching them to LED, we do have extra streetlights. So the cost, I believe, would be just the installation on the pole. I don't know specifically how much that would cost, but my guess is there would be enough funding within the streetlight budget to accomplish that.
Paul?
Paul Seidka, East Street, Tom. I'm the chairman of the Library of F.C.S., and I know we've been talking about the streetlight to light up at night so the people coming out of the library, employees coming out, have a sense of cover so they can see where they're going. I don't know who put this in, but if the town wants, we've been asking for one for a while, so hopefully we vote to do this, but I don't know who submitted it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, the motion before us is to adopt Article Nine as read. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten. To see if the town will vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-One A, to increase the gross receipts allowance for applicants for real estate tax deferral under said Clause Forty-One A from twenty-thousand to forty-thousand, and/or take any action relative thereto, twenty-thousand dollars to forty-thousand dollars. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Ten. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Ten is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41C, to increase the whole estate allowance for applicants for real estate tax exemption under said Clause 41C from $28,000 to $30,000 for a single person and from $30,000 to $35,000 for a married couple and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eleven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eleven is adopted unanimously. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 1, to increase the number of members of the Board of Selectmen from three to five and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file special legislation as on file with the town clerk to effect this change and to authorize the General Court to make clerical or editorial changes of form only to any bill so filed unless approved in advance by the Select Board and to authorize the Select Board to approve such provisions as fall within the public purpose of this vote or act in any manner relating thereto and/or take any action relative thereto. Hold on, I gotta finish reading it. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this m- article. A motion has been made and seconded to defeat the article. We'll now open for discussion. Once again, Tim McAdes, it's on it. Uh, could the Selectmen just talk a little bit about why they, uh, proposed this? And why they are recommending this article?
Thank you, Tim. Um, to be clear, it's not that we necessarily support, uh, I know personally, I don't really support this or I don't really have a, um, an opinion either way. I just, I heard many people bring it up. I thought it'd be something good for the town to vote on. I kinda wanna see where the town felt in this. So that's why we kind of, we're recommending it to be voted on more than actually recommending the article itself.
I'm gonna do just the same thing I did a moment ago. I wanna clarify, did the Board of Selectmen recommend the adoption of the article or just putting it on the board?
I think technically we did recommend the adoption of the article, but, um, personally, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, personally. So as a board, they do recommend it. Uh, Trevor personally was, was in the negative call. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, I guess as a clarification would be, if this passes, a five-member board, would that still be the Board of Health?
I, I'll, as a technical matter, nothing in this article addresses separating the Board of Health from the Board of Selectmen. So without a further bylaw change, yes, we would have a five-member Board of Health at this point also. Okay, that's why, what I figured, I just wanna double check.
Paul Cleverly, East Street Town, I'm just curious as to when this, if this does pass, when would it take effect, the next year?
Uh, I'm gonna throw that to Town Council because that's gonna be very much a legal question.
Thank you, as you may note from the article itself, the next step, this is the first step in the process, the next step would be the filing of special legislation with the Legislature. So this would require action by the Legislature to authorize, because it, it affects the, uh, matter of election or, or selection of an elected board. So it goes to state Legislature, Legislature would have to approve it, and then based upon what's approved by the Legislature, we determine when it becomes effective. So this would just be the first step in the process. Probably wouldn't be next year.
Go ahead. Uh, just to follow up to Selectman Matthews, uh, I know you're the one, just the town's tenor on it, basically. Uh, can you just say why, you know, what would be the benefits of a five-member board as opposed to a three-member board?
Yeah, Tim, I think it's kind of a double edged sword. I think part of it, you know, just we have to spread out, uh, the responsibilities across more people so that they, you know, each individual person can maybe spend more time. Obviously, you know, most of us have other jobs and, you know, only have so much time in the day. So we thought maybe five people could better handle a lot of the complex issues that we could deal with on a daily basis. Now that being said, five people getting to have five different opinions, so that could be, you know, maybe less things will get done when it comes to actually voting themselves. And then the other issue is, we do have quite an issue, um, with the old meeting laws where two Selectmen can never talk to each other because of court. So that would no longer be an issue and might make things a little more efficient if we had a five-person board.
Chuck?
John McHager again, sorry. Um, town was incorporated in 1683 with three Selectmen. 338 years with this system that we've had. I don't know what the catalyst for the change is, it just seems like maybe another level of bureaucracy.
Is there any additional discussion or questions to be had on this article? Okay, seeing none, uh, this is, again, a little bit in reverse. This is a motion to defeat. So when I call for the yes votes, the yes votes are actually against having five Selectmen. It is yes to keep three Selectmen. It will be no to have five Selectmen. So all who are in favor of keeping three Selectmen, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed to keeping three Selectmen and would therefore like to have five Selectmen, please say nay.
Nay.
Alright, in my judgment, the majority is to keep three Selectmen. Is there anyone who questions that voice vote? Seeing none, I will declare the article defeated by a majority vote. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5N, which allows the Board of Selectmen to establish a program to allow veterans to volunteer to provide services to the town in exchange for a reduction in property taxes and further to adopt the first adjustment in the final paragraph of said statute, thereby allowing an approved representative to volunteer for persons physically unable to provide such services and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors, the Cemetery Commission, the Building Commissioner, and the Veteran Services Officer. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the article. Article Thirteen, is there any questions or discussion on Article Thirteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax exempt lease, purchase financing agreement with All American Investment Group LLC to acquire the following vehicles that may be financed by the issuance of debt for a term up to the following useful life of the property to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21C, and further that the sum needed to satisfy the first year payment of this agreement be separately identified, raised, and appropriated in the capital budget section of the omnibus budget for fiscal year 2022 and/or take any action relative thereto. Police department, police cruisers for three years. Fire department, ambulance for three years. Fire department, engine pumper for four years. This was submitted by the Chief of Police. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article Fourteen. Is there any discussion or question? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the general laws, uh, general bylaws, Article 29, revolving funds, Section 29-6. Authorize revolving funds by revising the language included therein for the following revolving fund program or purpose. Department receipts to be credited to fund and representative or board entity authorized to spend, which currently reads Recreation Committee, to offset the cost of operation and maintenance of the boat ramp from fees from Long Pond Boat Ramp Users by the Board of Health, to read as follows. Board of Selectmen, to offer the cost of operation and maintenance, to offset the cost of operation and maintenance of the boat ramp and the Freetown Town Beach, from fees from Long Pond Boat Ramp Users and Town Beach stickers by the Board of Selectmen and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion to amend.
Okay, what would you like your amendment to be?
Uh, instead of revolving fund program or purpose for the Selectmen, I would like to have that be, uh, Open Space and Recreation Committee that would be in charge of the funds that were planned.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Oh, hold on, he's got a motion, it needs a second.
I second the motion.
Okay, the motion now is a second. Uh, what we first do is we vote on the amendment, then we go back to the original article itself. So at this time, is there any question or discussion only on changing this from Board of Selectmen to Open Space and Recreation Committee? Peter?
Right now, currently, second. Right now, currently, we haven't had those discussions with the Open Space and the Board of Selectmen. Second, it's an advisory committee, it's not a standing legal committee. It's just an ad hoc advisory committee through the Board of Selectmen. They don't have any authorities or powers other than what's granted through the Board of Selectmen. So they wouldn't have the authority provided with this bylaw change.
Again, uh, I'll turn.
Mark, you look like you have nothing to say.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, based upon Peter's, uh, comment, the town administrator's comment, I would raise a significant concern that, uh, obviously, use of funds must be through a, uh, a legally constituted body of the town and, and not through an advisory or ad hoc body. So if that is the situation, that the Open Space and Recreation Committee certainly make recommendations or give a, give guidance to the Board of Selectmen but would not be able to, um, accept and expend funds on behalf of the town.
Brian?
Okay, the reason, uh, so I'm on the Open Space and Recreation Committee and I understand we are in our infancy stages. I saw this as an opportunity to make this a, uh, opportunity for, to put more teeth into our committee and let us have control over the funds, over the board, uh, the boat ramp and the town beach since we will be the ones advising the Select Board on what to do. But obviously, hearing that we're not a legal, uh, stand, but I just want the towns, you know that we do have an Open Space and Recreation Committee that will be handling those issues. And the Select Board will be holding the money to help us fix these problems. So I withdraw my motion to amend.
Ron, do you take back your second? Okay, so that amendment is, is now withdrawn. That amendment is no longer under consideration. I would need now a motion either to adopt or defeat this article. Motion to adopt Article Fifteen as read, which keeps it as the Board of Selectmen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fifteen is adopted, is adopted unanimously. We're almost there, folks. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to establish the following fiscal year spending limits for each revolving fund established under Article 29 of the general bylaws and/or take any action relative thereto. The Board of Selectmen for the annual town reports, $500. The Communication Center for alarms, $800. The Police Department for exams, $100. The Police Department for firearm safety course, $7,000. And the Recreation Committee for Long Pond, $9,000. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Hold on, we just, we need some kind of motion first. Motion made and seconded to accept the article. Go ahead.
So this Recreation Committee for Long Pond? Uh, Brian, Recreation Committee for Long Pond, this is basically what will be happening when the funds are available from the Rec., from the Select Board to give to the Recreation Committee. So is this money going, the $9,000 going to the Open Space and Recreation Committee?
My, my understanding, and I'll ask for correction if I'm wrong, we used to have a committee in town called the Recreation Committee.
Okay.
And they were the ones who originated this fund. I think it's just still named that, is that correct?
So who's in, who's getting this $9,000, Ron?
I believe that's correct, but I believe it's now managed through the, through the Board of Selectmen.
So, uh, Kim?
Um, I think because we made the change to Board of Selectmen on the previous article, there should be an amendment to maybe as the Board of Selectmen.
But how come this has even made its way to warrant if it wasn't a legal entity that should be in control of the funds to begin with?
Go ahead.
I believe the Recreation Committee was a legal entity, it just hasn't been filled for quite some time.
Oh, so why was my previous motion to amend?
Because there was specifically a committee called the Recreation Committee that does not exist anymore.
Oh, okay. The Open Space and Recreation Committee is not the same as the Recreation.
Not the same, that was a set, they used to run the summer park program for the kids.
So this is again, I'm gonna piggyback some information on this too. This is another thing that people in town need to be aware of is who's been in charge of our town beaches and programs over the past five to 10 years? And who point figure's that? And, and how to fix things going forward? Because there's money that's going places and we don't know who was in charge of what.
I ask the administrator.
We're gonna fix that now, though, we're gonna fix that now, but.
Hold on, I'm gonna ask him to answer the question he asked.
Right now, the Board of Selectmen have and have been for quite some time in charge of parks and recreation. Under Mass. General Law, there's a special committee called Parks and Recreation Committee. We did not establish that, or the Board did not establish that because it's been a number of years. So the thought was to have an advisory committee, get that committee up and running, see what ideas, see how that works, then convert that to a parks and rep. But right now, the only legal authority in the town of Freetown for parks and recreation is through the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so that should be amended then, right? Is what you're saying, okay, so?
If, if I may, just to, to that point and why, I understand Kim's point. Um, there's a specific bylaw that na-, that lists and names the, uh, the, the various revolving funds, as you saw from the previous article, that, that amended that. We don't have an article to amend that bylaw. So I, I recognize that the point, I think that's something that will have to be taken up at a separate town meeting because that's actually a, a bylaw amendment as opposed to these, the, this article only deals with the spending limits. I think it's important to recognize revolving funds, this is not like taxation, these are just the fees that come in. And so the, the, the Board of Selectmen essentially acts in place of a parks commission or, or parks department as the town administrators reference. This, and, and it probably will make sense at a future meeting to amend the bylaw as necessary to, to clarify this issue. But unfortunately, right now, that's not before the town, so we, we can't do that at this meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
Again, I was just making sure that the funds were being properly secured and there are plans, so.
I think they are.
Second. My, my name is David from the East Street Town. Also, Recreation, created Long Pond. You got the town beach over there. I'm saying, like, about fees and stickers, you know, money, you know, generating into the account. Saying, I was about to buy the, the town beach this past Saturday. I noticed last year, I went by there, looked at all the cars that were in the parking lot for the town beach. Doesn't have town stickers on all of them. It's 14 at the time. Went by there yesterday, whose cars were there, not yesterday, it was actually Sunday. Excuse me. Uh, I went there. It was a police cruiser parked near the baseball field. I was driving in. I went down, looked at the beach, drove back out. I stopped, I seen the officer. Hey, how you doing, how's your day? Just like, uh, what's the situation? You actually, uh, chuck the stickers on his cars down the, down the public beach? He goes, no, 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 I wasn't, I wasn't taught to by the town. So he was not looking for nothing. Is that true?
Um, I'll ask the Police Chief to answer that if he, if he knows the answer to that question.
No, that, that is not true. The officers have been directed to, uh, place, uh, parking violations. However, they are not down there all the time. We're frequently asked to go down and police the beach for dogs and bottles and trucks. Uh, it's been more than a decade. I've asked the town to respond to the issues of the boat ramp and the beach. I submitted plans. I've, uh, submitted bylaws that were adopted and policies. I believe this board and the administrator is now taking it more serious and, uh, they have a plan. That's all I can report.
What I noticed on my Freetown, at first place, that we took over the state board ramp question. To me, that's kind of like, you, you're grabbing the liability there. I don't have nothing to do with it, the state manager, 3,000 is involved with it. I don't know why, but now the launching the boats, the jet speeds for the, the state board ramp, and then actually bringing it to the town beach over there. You know what I mean? It's happening all the time. You can drive down there, you can see what's, what goes on. The others drive down there with the kind of the trails, you know, so. Don't get much with it, but I see no really, but actually being taken. You know, to say, you could park there, you know, the beach would get to us, but, but.
Hold on, I think the town attorney has something to, to add to the conversation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, two things I wanted. Uh, first, you know, just keep in mind, all we're talking about right now is the, the spending limit for the revolving fund. We're not, we're not discussing the actual management, that's, that's not an issue of discussion.
I'm gonna add, it's more than up, because, yeah, you talk about funds, you know, revenue, streams like that, it's like.
I understand, just, it's.
I had to see the officer yesterday, he said, I was a director to give out the tickets, it's like.
But again, yeah, we're only talking about the, the revolving fund.
Yeah, I understand, that's the fact of my opinion, that's it.
Second point, uh, the town just, just did point out to me, just to bring things back. So in, in Article Fifteen, we amended the revolving fund for Long Pond.
in Article fifteen, we amended the revolving funds for Long Pond, uh, boat ramp, and we did make that change, I, I fortunately didn't make that same connection, so the gentleman who just pointed out the issue earlier about wanting to change the, uh, the identification of the committee, in fact, what we, what would be appropriate for this article, if the gentleman wanted to make amendment, is to amend the references to the Recreation Committee, Long Pond, to now the Board of Selectmen, uh, operation and maintenance of boat ramp and Freetown Town Beach. So if you did want to make that amendment, that would be...
Okay, I was able to clarify, why do Freetown...
Hold on one second, he's made a motion, I need to know about a second. Okay, so motion made and seconded to amend in Article sixteen, uh, Recreation Committee to say Board of Selectmen, and Long Pond to say, uh, Long Pond Boat Ramp and Operation and Maintenance of Long Pond Boat Ramp and the Freetown Town Beach. We're now discussing for a moment only that specific change. So is there any discussion or question only on that wording change? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That change is adopted by the majority, there was one, uh, no. We are now back to discussing, discussing, excuse me, just the article in general. Dan.
My name is Don O'Leary, and I go by Dan, one forty-eight County Road, East Freetown. Uh, I just want to bring up a point, uh, I've been here thirty-six, thirty-seven years in town, uh, regarding the Recreation Department that we used to have, the budget back then, when I first moved to town, was a hundred dollars a year. Uh, the last chairman of that department was a gentleman by the name of Gerald Richards, when I was in Florida. I was heavily involved in building of Central Park, the ball field, I was one of the six men in the committee that built that complex. We put a million dollars into doing that. One of the reasons why we did that was because we no longer had a Recreation Department, and our plan at the time was to have the proceeds from that snack shack to go into helping develop that field, the KRR complex, uh, um, the other ball field...
The Long Pond fields?
The Long Pond, the Long Pond fields, but also the, uh, no, um, we had a meco fi pole.
Oh, halfway park?
Halfway park, sorry. But our plan was to do that, was to develop, uh, funds in order to support that without having to go to the towns to do that. Unfortunately, what's happened, unfortunately, what's happened today is the, uh, Freetown Youth Athletic Association is now the Freetown Lakeville Youth Athletic Association, so we are now partnered with Lakeville, uh, with all of our ball fields, if you have a kid in town or a grandson, grandchild in town, they play in Lakeville at Ted Williams Camp, and they also play at KRR or Long Pond or at the family fields. But we did have a department, and because the budget was so small, we couldn't do anything with it, it folded. And that, hence, what's happened was this, that that ball field was built to support that, and unfortunately, that's not been the case. Uh, when the committee was disbanded, uh, things changed, okay? But we did have a committee in town.
Is there any additional discussion or questions on Article sixteen? Okay, hearing none, we would now be voting on adopting Article sixteen with the amendment, the wording change we adopted a few moments ago. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article sixteen is adopted unanimously as amended. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article eleven, zoning bylaws, by deleting Section eleven point eleven in its entirety and replacing it with the new Section eleven point eleven, on file with the town clerk's office, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. The Planning Board recommends this article. The Planning Board, because this is a zoning article, is required to make a recommendation, and they do recommend that you adopt this article. Uh, we have the planning technician here, is there anything that you have to add before we open it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Neil's the planning technician, um, just like to say that FEMA requires these changes to be made, and if they're not made, then no one in the town can get funding shots.
So this is related to the bylaws?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adopt and...
Sorry.
A second. Is there any discussion or questions on this article? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article seventeen is adopted unanimously. Uh, I would now ask for a motion to take Article twenty out of order. Article twenty was a late addition to the warrant and needs to be voted on before eighteen and nineteen.
Except for that offer?
A motion's been made and seconded to accept the offer of taking Article twenty before Article eighteen. Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on moving this article? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is adopted unanimously. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars for infrastructure improvements for the Council on Aging Building, eight thousand eight hundred dollars of which will be expended for electrical generator relocation, and five thousand dollars of which will, uh, to be expended for waterline relocation, including all incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Somebody's gonna make a motion. Motion been made and seconded to adopt Article twenty as read. Uh, town administrator has discussion.
These are services that presently run through the old police station, the COA, so we're trying to remove them from the old police station, have the direct service to the COA coming.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions on Article twenty? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty has been adopted unanimously. Article... What'd you say? Article eighteen, thank you. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of blank for the purpose of supplementing the capital stabilization fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. Uh, the Finance Committee recommends a number.
Two-thirds vote. I'm forgetting exactly what we, what our decision was.
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five, okay.
Okay. The Finance Committee is recommending seventy-five thousand. Now, I heard someone say two-thirds, is that, does the warrant say two-thirds?
Yeah. Yeah. The warrant does look simple, John. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that's okay. So it's a much, it's very easy to put money in the bank, it's very hard to take it out of the bank. Uh, Article eighteen, again, the Finance Committee is recommending seventy-five thousand dollars. Would anybody like to make that as a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt Article eighteen in that amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article eighteen is adopted unanimously, unanimously in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of blank for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends...
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand dollars. Motion is made and seconded to adopt eleven thousand dollars. Now, before we vote on this, everybody's very excited because this is the last article. Remember, we haven't done the special town meeting yet. Don't fly out of here at record speed. Is there any discussion on Article nineteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article nineteen is adopted unanimously in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. I need a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting.
Jeez, everybody's so excited, I don't know why.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn the annual town meeting at nine fifty-eight P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned from the annual town meeting. We now jump directly into the special town meeting, which I will call to order as soon as I find the paper that I wrote the stuff down on. There it is, okay. The appointed hour having arrived and the quorum being present, it being nine fifty-eight P.M., I will now call the special town meeting to order. I will ask the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and the return.
Warrant for the special town meeting, Town of Freetown, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June seventh, twenty-twenty-one, seven P.M., Apona Quette Regional High School Gymnasium, one hundred Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, zero-two-three-four-seven, Bristol County. To either of the constables of the Town of Freetown, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Freetown who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to meet at Apona Quette Regional High School, one hundred Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the seventh day of June, twenty-twenty-one, at seven P.M. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonet Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store at Asonet, the Freetown Town Hall, the Freetown Communication Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the Town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the Town of Freetown this nineteenth day of May, on Old Dominie, two thousand twenty-one. We are aware that there was an error in the printing of the warrant, um, and that correction has been made. Signed, the Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, George L. Runwall, Jared C. Zager. To the town clerk of Freetown, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein: in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Freetown Town Hall; in East Freetown, the East Freetown Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Freetown Communication Center. Signed Carlton E. Abbott, Junior Constable.
Okay, uh, and again, this is a continued meeting, it was posted for the high school and it was moved here for the air conditioning. Um, from the number of papers I see blowing around just in the back corner right now, I'm guessing that we might as well have stayed put. But that's okay, uh, we do appreciate, the school did, did do their best to accommodate us tonight, and on very short notice. Uh, once again, if you have a cell phone, please make sure it's still on silent. If you come to the microphone, wait to be recognized before speaking. Have your, now, uh, we're onto the other vote ticket now. And, all of the articles, and thank God there are only five of them, will be funded from free cash unless otherwise specified. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and five cents in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of paying two prior fiscal year bills, to be funded from certified retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. It requires a nine-tenths vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion's made and seconded to adopt Article one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article one is adopted unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate in the general fund from free cash the sum of nine hundred dollars for the purpose of funding an unpaid employee health insurance stipend covering the period of October twenty-eighteen through June twenty-nineteen or take any action, take any other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the treasurer. It requires a nine-tenths vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion's made and seconded to adopt Article two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article two is adopted unanimously. Article three, to see if the town will vote to amend Article six, Section six point one of this general bylaws relative to the members of the Soil Conservation Board by striking the second and third paragraphs and inserting in place thereof the following sentence: Effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, the Conservation Commission shall serve as the Soil Conservation Board, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion's made and seconded to accept Article three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article three is adopted unanimously. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of money to pay for tree maintenance or removal in several cemeteries, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article and that it be funded in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. Motion is made and seconded to adopt this article and fund it at fifteen hundred dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article four is adopted unanimously. Article five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars, I know it's blank, but that number got filled in ahead of time, for the purpose of supplementing the capital stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article and that it be funded at thirty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article five in that amount of three, thirty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars, which again is being transferred from free cash. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article five is adopted unanimously. Motion to adjourn, somebody?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, third, twenty-fifth, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The special... Tim is opposed to going home, everybody else wants to get out of here, so we're adjourned. Thank you very much, thank you all for sticking it out tonight.